Welcome to another edition of Lakeville's City Council Wrap-Up. During this program, we will highlight the agenda items presented to the Lakeville City Council at their July 6th, 2015 meeting. First highlighted item on the agenda is item number 5B, Police Department Annual Report. And to provide the background information on this agenda item is Chief of Police Jeff Long.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is our presentation of the 2014 Annual Report. You will have to think back a little ways as we're already into July, but quite a bit happened in the year 2014. I started in January, late January of 2014, and one of the objectives of the year was to take a look at the organization, see how it's functioning. One of the major undertakings for the year was a reorganization of how the police department was set up. The most important piece that we were doing differently is we added a business manager position. We felt that with the data privacy laws and all the requirements for retention and budget reaching close to $10 million, that it was time to have someone with a business background run that part of the budget. We've done that, we put that in place. And then we broke down the patrol divisions into two different areas. They worked 12-hour shifts. Two shifts worked days, two shifts worked nights. Then we added a division called Operations, and that was originally titled Community Operations because that is the area of the police department that is out in the community the most. Our community service officers, which handle things such as animal complaints, vehicle lockouts, minor parking complaints, things such as that, as well as our Street Crimes Unit, Traffic Unit, and our new Training Officer position that will oversee all training of police officers. Not on the street training, but training that's required, and I'll have a separate slide on that in a little bit. And then finally, our Investigations Area, which has our Two School Resource Officers, Five Detectives, and our Drug Task Force Officer. Another major undertaking in 2014 was adjusting the way that our patrol zones are set up. I've made no secret that I'm not happy with the way our response time looks, and I think that there is a way to improve that. So this had not been looked at in a really long time, and by patrol zone, that's where we station at least one officer per shift. And so you can kind of see the structure where we utilize County Road 50 a little bit, 35, and also Dodd. We're hoping the North-South will help us, and the one major East-West will help us to respond to calls sooner. We will have a little better idea at the end of this year how we're doing. Notable cases in 2014: We had a domestic assault and criminal vehicular operation that resulted in the substantial body of harm of one of our police officers. We were responding to a domestic in which a male was assaulting two juveniles while en route. They literally bumped into each other. The offender's vehicle deliberately struck the officer, causing a pretty significant head injury. Arson and insurance fraud that actually started in 2013. Detective Dave Watson was working with Faribault PD, but due to his work that was completed in 2014 with successful charges, he was actually awarded the Minnesota Chapter of International Arson Investigators Association Team Award. We had a person that was found frozen to death, literally. It was a suspicious death because when things happen with hypothermia, severe hypothermia, there's paradoxical undressing. So when we find this, we were very suspicious. It turns out it was just an unfortunate accident. We had a $1.7 million theft where a Hearthside employee conspired and successfully defrauded the company. We worked with the FBI, the Postal Inspector's Office, and the Department of Treasury to compile the cases that resulted in six federal indictments. We had a fugitive from justice that was living in our community. Rather violent murder occurred in 1983 in Denton, Texas. Through current DNA procedures, they were able to solve a cold case. Person is now in Texas, pending trial. Of course, we had a deceased body found in Ritter Farm Park, 2014. That was someone that had been missing in our community since 2012. Some of the challenges that we're facing in 2014 and beyond, basically the calls for service. We've talked a little bit about this to the council. It's not necessarily the number of calls for service, it's the amount of time that the calls for service are now taking. As you know, mental health issues have been a troubling thing, not only for our community but nationwide. We had another incident today, suicide involving a gun. And these calls are taking a considerable amount of time, in which we're working very hard to reach out to some of the victims that are suffering from mental illness, and we're revisiting it and putting them in touch with crisis lines and our chaplains and our police officers. And it's calls such as this that are just taking more time than what police officers used to do. Assaults, primarily domestic-related assaults, are very time-consuming. The number of weapons calls that we're getting now, not necessarily because people are in violation, but because there's just so many of them now. There's been, past several years, an onslaught record number of permits to purchase pistols that have been going on. So we're facing a lot of guns out on the street and a lot of thefts. We took a theft report just this week, of which a gentleman went to check for his gun in his car. He hadn't checked in about a month, and it's missing. He doesn't know where it went. So it's things such as this, that they're legally purchased, but they're not legally or properly secured. DUI and DWIs, you know, those calls take about an average of two hours. We've addressed that in 2015 with a specific officer that, through a grant from the state of Minnesota, will be working DUIs, so we're excited about that. Touched on mental health, and then also traffic enforcement. We're in a city close to 40 square miles with a lot, a lot of roadways and a lot of complaints about the speeds of traffic, cut-through traffic, aggressive driving, things of that sort. But with three or four officers on per shift, it's trouble addressing all the traffic complaints that are out there. Kind of the fun things in our department, the K-9 program, Tank and Zeus. Most of you have met Tank and Zeus. Zeus is pending retirement. We just posted for a new dog that'll be going to training the next year. Zeus will be done at about December or so, but they had another successful year. The Dakota County Drug Task Force Officer Jeff Hanson has been assigned out there for a number of years now. His canine, Marley, worked over 150 sniff requests for the Drug Task Force, which led to 40 search warrants and the seizure of firearms and drugs in all the major categories, including six pounds of meth and over $95,000 in cash. The Drug Task Force work resulted in 697 arrests in 2014. We have our Public Safety Chaplaincy Plan. We have five volunteers that have a variety of duties. One of their primary duties is responding and providing comfort at death scenes and death notifications. They focus on employee wellness throughout the entire city. They serve as liaisons between the departments and the community, and they've been expanded with new roles and responsibilities, including our Mental Health Intervention Team, which is what I touched on a few minutes ago, in which when someone has a mental health crisis, we do return within a couple weeks to visit with the person and make sure that they have the resources that they need to be healthy. Our Reserve Officer Unit continues to be strong. We had 16 volunteers in 2014 with a little over 3,300 hours served. There were some events they worked at, Panaprog, Taste of Lakeville, sporting events, call outs, major incidents. And they also spent 1,000 hours patrolling our streets. And there's a picture of Reserve Officer of the Year Brian Bixby, who's also in training to be a law enforcement officer. Training is a time-consuming thing in law enforcement. We spent 2,048 hours in training in 2014, which is the equivalent of one full-time employee. Approximately 40 hours of those are post-mandated. In other words, we're required to take these classes by law. Another 40% of those hours are just maintaining certifications, and then the last 20% is training on new skills or training for recently newly hired officers. They can bring them up to skills with things like tasers, medical training, DUI detection, things of that sort. Some of the training highlights, I won't go through them all, but you can kind of see what our training involves. Firearms qualifications, defensive tactics. You'll see Data Master Certification, that's the DUI instrument that measures blood alcohol content. K-9 training, our field training. One of the classes that we added this year was the de-escalation strategies for military veterans in crisis, investigations of suicides, report writing, things of that sort. And the picture to the right is just kind of a neat picture. It's two of our newest officers, Officer Anya Eichinger and Officer Natalie Anderson. Our crimes for the past several years, criminal sexual conduct have remained pretty well steady. Domestic assaults are, you know, they're up and down, they're cyclical. 2014 provided a few less. And the other assaults, again, this is typically cyclical, the numbers are a little bit higher, but nothing significant increase or decrease. Property crimes, these tend to be the nonviolent crimes, but also the most crimes that we sustain here in Lakeville. Larceny and theft. I won't read all the numbers. You can see the green is 2014, and the other colors are the years preceding that. Burglaries, I found that very interesting. We actually had, it seemed like we had more because we had a large number of complaints right along the freeway of burglaries, and we actually added up the numbers there a little bit down last year. Property damage, pretty much consistent. Vehicle theft is up considerably. That was kind of a surprise to us. And we'll cover this in one of our upcoming council meetings, but we did apply and did receive a vehicle theft grant, which will allow us to aggressively attack the theft of vehicles, not only in our community but Apple Valley and Rosemont also. Our response to citizens, medical emergencies are up slightly, but that's not unexpected when you have a growth in population. Animal calls are down slightly. In part of our reorganization, we eliminated the animal control officer. So some of the calls that were slotted as animal calls were handled in different ways. So those numbers are down a little bit. Alarms were down slightly from 2013, but consistent with other years. And calls of suspicion, I thought this was very good news. We constantly are telling people, if you see something suspicious, please call us. And it appears people are doing just that, so that is good news. Cat incidents, this is the total number of calls that we were either dispatched on or generated over the last several years. We were down a little bit in 2014, which I'm going to talk about why that occurred in just a minute. Traffic crashes, consistent. It was a rough winter in 2014. I'm not surprised that is up a little bit. It was very cold, very snowy. Speed citations were down. What I found interesting is, I was going through these numbers, I look at 2012, for the total of the year, there was 1,270 citations. We've already surpassed that in 2014, or 2015. And DUI, we're on a pace to well exceed that 200 number in this year also. Traffic stops in general, shows you what we've done over the last several years. Again, I will talk about why those numbers fluctuated so much from 2012 to 2014 shortly. Talking points, as I said at the beginning of this presentation, 2014, the reorganization was one of the largest efforts that we undertook. At one point, we were short 15 officers. That involved people that were on injury, military resignations, a variety of different issues. We're currently down just three. By the end of the summer, we hope to be down by just one. So it's taken about 18 months, but we've made significant progress in retaining the officers we have and hiring good officers. There's a significant amount of hiring going on in the metro area due to the pension law change that occurred last year. Experienced officers are in high demand. We fell victim to that as we were losing some officers to other cities. So we needed to come up with something that we could offer to our current employees and attract other employees to stay here. We think we've done that with the reorganization, in which we have a significant number of supplemental duties that officers can work to get them out of the squad car and try something different, whether it's an investigative spot, school resource officer, DUI officer, MAG team. We just have a variety of different things for officers to now partake in. I talked a little bit about our stats being different in 2014. Part of that was that we had no traffic officer, we had no street crimes officers, and we did not have the training coordinator. We also had one investigator position left open. This had a significant impact on any self-initiated calls. When you're down 15 people, we were really just hoping to fill shifts, and we were even having trouble doing that at times. So our numbers were a little bit off in 2014. I suspect you're going to see a significant difference when I'm doing this next year at this time. Those officers minus the training coordinator have, either are in the process of being filled or are filled right now. The officers that we do have here, I've found, after 18 months, are very dedicated and committed to public safety in Lakeville. We're seeing more and more officers that want to come here. Our last few hiring processes, we've hired two Hennepin County Sheriff Office employees, one Metro Transit Officer, one Montgomery Officer, and for the current application process we have, we have a number of experienced officers that told us they are going to be applying from some of the other metropolitan cities. So that's very good news for us. People want to work here. And I give that to the supportive community that we have. I found a great deal of support here in Lakeville for the police department. We're constantly hearing good things. The city council's been very supportive of us, and we're extremely appreciative of that. And also, I have a very hard-working command staff that has worked really hard over the last 18 months to change some things in the PD, to put us back on the right track. Not that we're on the wrong track, but obviously some things were going wrong when we're down that many employees. The focus on 2015 has been getting us back to business, setting new priorities and new programs, and I look forward to talking about that over the next six months as we wrap up 2015 and then also for the annual report next year. And I'll end it with our mission statement. We have reiterated this to all of our employees, that we are to be working in partnership with the community. We are to be reducing crime, solving problems, and ensuring that there's a good quality of life in Lakeville. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Next highlighted item on the agenda is item number 5D, Public Works Monthly Report. And to give the background information on this agenda item is Public Works Director Chris Petry.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This evening's report is for the Public Works Department for June of 2015. Majority of the report focuses on a lot of the projects that we have going on around the community, and the first one that I'll highlight is our water treatment facility improvements. And the majority of that project consists of adding an additional million gallons of underground storage behind the water treatment facility that is used ultimately to be pumped out into our distribution system. Once completed, that will bring the total storage capacity up to 4.1 million gallons at that facility. And as you can see by the photos, the slab, the walls, the columns in the new reservoir have been completed, and you can see now the actual deck or the top of the reservoir is what is being worked on. Something important to note is the interior, the walls, but specifically the columns function as baffles. As the water moves through this reservoir after it's been treated, it allows that pockets of water do not develop that become stagnant. So it ultimately helps to continually mix the water and keep the chemicals in suspension in the water. The project does remain on schedule. Once the decking, of course, is complete and it's sealed up, the tank will actually be tested for leaks, and then it will be put into service after that. The next update is our 2015 Street Reconstruction Project. Phase one, or the first year of the project, continues. As the council and those in attendance might recall, it's phased over two years. Again, it's on schedule, and it continues with concrete curb and gutter installation. You can see that there. You can see some grating. You can see also in the photo on the right side, the installation of a new sidewalk. Both contractors are progressing well, although we have, of course, suffered a few setbacks with the weather. Today would be a good example of that. The 50/60 Roundabout is the next project I'd like to highlight. Of course, if you've driven by, you can't go through it, as everyone is well aware, but if you've driven by specifically on the western leg of it, over near Buffalo Wildwings, near Orchard Trail, you can see that there are sections that have concrete curb and gutter now, even have some pavement down. So it's continuing on as the contractor works to finalize some relocation of small utilities. The project is still on schedule to be completed by the end of August. Next slide here is our Holyoke Avenue Water Tower, which is just north of this facility here. Site excavation and preparation for the foundation is complete, and you can see in this photo, the crews are placing rebar to start pouring the foundation. Quite an extensive amount of rebar that's used to put that 2-million-gallon water tower on top of it. The actual pour of the foundation is scheduled for this Thursday, weather permitting. So you'll see a lot of concrete trucks coming in and out of that site on Thursday, of course, prior to any activities for Panaprog over the weekend. So once the foundation's poured, what we'll see next, latter part of July and into August, is a separate crew mobilizing to start constructing the column of the water tower, and that's also going to be constructed out of concrete, and you'll see that occur over the fall. This is a project that is expected to still take about another 12 to 18 months, and expected completion is in the fall of 2016. The next slide here is the Well 20 construction. This construction began the last week of June, and the well is located in Cherryview Park, right up near the parking lot and the warming house and hockey rink area. The new well, of course, is needed to ensure that additional capacity is available to meet our customer demands, as well as the emergency needs in our water system. Drilling of the well will be relatively quick. The type of method that's being used here is a rotary drilling method versus maybe some of you that are familiar with it, another style of well drilling is a cable tool where they actually pound through the layers of bedrock. This is actually a drill that goes through it. So we're hopeful that this will be completed by the end of summer, and then what will occur will be the final installation of the rest of the piping, the pumps, the motors, the electrical equipment. And the expectation is that the well will be completed, or substantially complete yet this year, and will be ready to go online next spring and in time for the peak season of 2016. Couple other project updates. We don't have photos because these actually haven't started yet, but the Hamburg Avenue Improvement Project, we continue to coordinate all of the contracts for that. Those have been finalized. And then we're also continuing to work out JPA with the Watershed District and Dakota County Soil and Water Conservation Group for some drainage improvements in that area. As soon as that takes place, meaning the drainage improvements, the roadwork will take place, and that will occur in the fall. Kensington Boulevard, that improvement project, our pre-construction meeting is actually scheduled for tomorrow morning, and it's anticipated that construction will begin shortly after that pre-construction meeting. Again, I want to emphasize that once that construction occurs and begins, we recognize that there is some additional traffic on Kensington. So besides the need to make sure that the businesses in that area continue to have access, we will also ensure that it's not impacting any of the additional traffic that we see on the roadway to cause any further delays than may already be there because of the 50/60 project. The last few slides, it is the end of the second quarter, so I wanted to highlight our water use year-to-date. Water use for 2015 is up just slightly over our 10-year average. You can see that on the far right of the graph here. We're up about 2% over our 10-year average, and so far, our total water use for the year through June is 957 million gallons. Monthly water use, you can see May and June was a little below the 10-year average. We did have some wet weather during those months, and I would believe that that is the contributing factor to seeing it slightly below the 10-year average. And lastly, we have our water use per person or per capita. Again, we've seen an impressive reduction specifically in June, thanks to the weather. Our 10-year average is about 163 gallons per person per day. In the month of June, it was 127 gallons per person per day. So we're definitely pleased with those numbers. And that does conclude the monthly report for June 2015. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Next highlighted item on the agenda is item number 10, Public Hearing to Consider a Business Subsidy Under the Business Subsidy Act for Lakeville Technologies LLC and Mendel Machine and Manufacturing Incorporated. And to provide the information on this agenda item is Community and Economic Development Director Dave Olson.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I've been before you several times in the last several months talking about this project, and it's one I've been very fortunate to work on. This is the last step in the process, and I'm actually going to follow this item up with the last item on your agenda, which is the approval of the preliminary and final plat and an easement vacation, which basically sets the stage for the expansion of the building. But as has been previously discussed, Lakeville Technologies LLC, which is the entity that owns the real estate and the building, is proposing to construct an 18,700-square-foot expansion. The good thing, and what's made this project a little bit easier, is that the principles for both Lakeville Technology LLC and Mendel Manufacturing are one and the same, and Brian Bartz's controlling interest of both of those entities, which made the discussions very straightforward. But they're expanding by 18,700 square feet of their existing 32,000-square-foot building. Obviously, as Mr. Bartz has indicated, they are experiencing considerable growth and need to add additional warehouse and manufacturing space. The company, several months ago, submitted an application for tax increment financing to assist in the over $455,000 in eligible site development costs associated with the property. You'll see in a little bit when I show you the preliminary plat drawings, but one of the reasons that made these costs higher than typical is that because of the need and desire to maximize the development of the site, they're going to be handling stormwater treatment underneath the parking lot, and they install these chambers that go underneath the parking lot. And it's certainly an effective way to handle stormwater, but it is also a more expensive way to handle stormwater. But it does allow, and this, as we've discussed several times over the last few years with Brian and his staff, this will maximize the site for Mendel at their current location. The proposed TIF assistance is based on the assessor's market value determination of the proposed expansion, and is anticipated to be an amount not to exceed $155,912. And I'll get to, just in a second, the documents in front of you that put that correct number in a couple places in the agreement that hadn't previously been identified. Currently, there are 94 employees at Mendel, and one of the requirements of this agreement is that they have, well, and that may have changed, this was from a month or two ago, but the good thing is, is that, as Brian pointed out, they're adding jobs in their high-skill, high-wage professional jobs, and the type of jobs we're promoting and through our strategic plan in Lakeville. Pay-as-you-go, the way this agreement is structured, is that as the taxes are paid in subsequent years after the addition has been in place and is now counted and captured separately in a tax increment district, the city is obligated under this agreement to provide 95% of the captured increment back to the business on twice-annual payments or reimbursements to the business. Hence the term pay-as-you-go. As the company expands and the taxes become due on the expansion, we capture those taxes and pay them back and reimburse the developer for these expenses, which only amount to about a third of the total site improvement cost for the project. The job creation goals are real, too. We're actually hopeful that the job creation numbers will be higher, but we set a goal that both the company and the city were comfortable with, and if everything goes according to a plan, I'm guessing that these goals will be exceeded, but this is the goal we established, i.e. the 12 jobs that were identified or are identified in the agreement. And one of the other requirements is, under Minnesota state law, that once a business receives a subsidy, they have to maintain their operations in your community for a minimum of five years. And if for some reason they were to move or relocate out of Lakeville sooner than five years, there is a provision in the statute to require a prorated reimbursement back for any of the assistance that's been provided. So we're confident in our discussions and our negotiations with Mendel that that's not likely to occur, but that is a provision that was put in state statute a number of years ago, and we're obligated to operate under. The city council approved the creation of the TIF district for this project at your June 15th city council meeting. That set the stage to come forward now with the development contract, that is the binding agreement between the city and the business. And it's a three-way agreement between the city and Lakeville Technologies LLC and Mendel Manufacturing, because the entity that owns the property is ultimately responsible for paying the property taxes, but the company that operates the business is the entity that's responsible for creating the jobs. So it's a three-way agreement between those two entities and the city. EDC has reviewed this project several times. Their last recommendation on it came at their May 26th meeting. I would like to point out that the changes that were put in front of you apply to page 16 and then Schedule B, and it should have said the amount, and I'll put my glasses on to make sure I get them. And it should have said the amount, and I'll put my glasses on to make sure I get this right, but the total amount of the assistance not to exceed the TIFF amount of assistance is a hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars, which is slightly higher, about nine thousand dollars higher than the, than the amount that was included in the agreement, which was a previous amount and should have been, should have been changed to reflect this. So it's in section, Article Six of the agreement, and it also shows up again in Schedule B, which is the tax increment revenue note. And I would point out, and I guess include or request in the council's approval of this, in case we miss that number anywhere else in the agreement, we just came across this this afternoon, we will make them consistent with that, that one fifty-five nine twelve number. So with that, I will stand for any questions the council may have.
Item number ten was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Next highlighted item on the agenda is item number eleven, Granada Business Park Second Edition. And once again, to provide the background information on this agenda item is Community and Economic Development Director Dave Olson.
We would typically have done this in, in reverse order, but because the business subsidy agreement required a public hearing, the final plat does, this is all being considered to be approved at the same meeting, and it actually lined up fairly well. But the site and the council has seen this before, but the outlot that actually Lakeville Technologies LLC purchased several years ago with the anticipation of and hopeful, I guess, that the, that the business was going to continue to, to grow. And as, as Mr. Bartz pointed out, this is the second expansion since they, since Mendel located here in two thousand and three. But the slot was part of the original Granada Business Park, and it was platted as an outlot, which means it can't be developed until it's final-platted into a lot. The plat was fairly straightforward, and it basically didn't change any of the dimensions of the property or changes of any of the right-of-way, but it basically goes from being a lot and block to a, excuse me, from an outlot to a lot and one block, one Granada Business Park Second Edition. The total amount that we're being, is being platted here is one-point-one-eight acres. And then finally, what it looks like after the, what will be constructed in terms of improvements, shows the eighteen-thousand square, seven-hundred square foot addition. Approximately half of it is on the, on the existing lot, the existing building on, but the other half is, is located on the outlot soon to be platted as a lot and block in Granada Business Park Second. And as Councilmember LeBeau point out, more importantly, what this does is to, is to try and maximize the availability of parking primarily for employees of the company. And you can't see it on this drawing, but the, there will be chambers underneath the parking lot, right in the, along the easterly portion, that will allow for under, under parking lot treatment of stormwater to, again, maximize the amount of, of both building and parking that can be developed on the site. Land Commission held their public hearing on June eighteenth and unanimously recommended approval of the preliminary and final plat. I should also point out, the council's also being asked to, as, as is typically the case, there was a utility easement along the northerly border of the existing Lot One Block One, contained the existing building. That easement is being vacated, and we will replace those easements with new easements around the perimeter of the new platted lot, previously platted as an outlot. The other point that I would like to point out is that we are, it was deemed the, the most efficient way to go about this was just to plat the new lot, the existing lot, existing building and the existing lot were a platted, developable lot. And what we will do is do a zoning combination letter to basically combine these two lots into one developable, rather than going back and replating the existing lot. It just didn't seem to prove, or to be necessary or warranted. So we kept it as simple as possible, just to plat the outlot into a lot and block, and we'll do, issue a lot combination letter, which will then result in the county treating it as one lot and issuing one tax statement for the entire building located on two plats, two separate platted lots. So with that, staff recommends approval with the conditions and as well as the corresponding development contract, which has been signed by the developer, Lakeville Technologies LLC. We are in receipt of the letter of credit and the cash fees that were due in conjunction with this plat. So everything is in order. In fact, I think the plat milars were delivered to the office today, so we're moving this as quickly as we can and get the developer and their contractor going on actual construction.
Item number eleven was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Well, those were the highlighted items presented to the council at their July sixth, two thousand and fifteen meeting. If you have any questions or comments regarding these agenda items, please feel free to call City Hall. The number is nine-five-two-nine-eight-five-four-four-hundred. Thanks for watching this edition of Lakeville City Council Wrap-Up.